City Council, which is a joint meeting with the Nisqually Tribal Council to order for November 29, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bell?
Present.
Councilmember Bokey?
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Moss? Deputy Mayor Whalen? And Mayor Anderson?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, I'd like to pass the cattle to the Nisqually Tribal Chair Willie Frank III. I'd like to welcome Chairman Frank and the Nisqually Tribal Council. It's great honor to have this joint meeting with you tonight. If you have any formalities for starting your end of the meeting like we do, please, please go forward with those and otherwise we'll move to the question of renaming Fort Silicon Park, which you had asked to have on the agenda.
Yeah, definitely. I think let's, let's definitely do some introductions and I'll start off. My name is Willie Frank III. My Indian name is Kalashkin and I'm Chairman of Nisqually Indian Tribe and I'll pass it over to Dave, IL, Hanford, Pete and David Trout. And Ezra on here.
Hello, everybody. I'm David IL, Treasurer for the tribe.
Evening, Herr from McLeod, sixth council member for the Nisqually Indian Tribe.
You're up, Pete.
Yeah, Pete Dancer, CEO of Nisqually Tribe.
David?
Okay. Hello, everyone. This is David Trout. I'm the Natural Resources Director for the Nisqually Indian Tribe. I've been in this position since 1987. Thanks.
All right.
And I think maybe, maybe we should do the same.
Yeah, definitely.
Because we didn't, we didn't come up on the screen when we did our roll call. So I'll, I'll pass it to Deputy Mayor Jason Whalen and just take turns.
Jason Whalen, Deputy Mayor. I've been on the council 12 years, just elected to my fourth re-term. Looking forward to starting that in January.
Councilmember Branstadter?
I'm Councilmember Mike Branstadter. I have position two on the Lakewood City Council and like the Deputy Mayor, I've been on the council for 12 years and recently been elected for additional four.
I'll go ahead. I'm Patty Bell. I was appointed in March to council and I was elected this November to a term.
Councilmember Moss?
I'm Mary Moss. I've been on the councils for 12 years. This is my 12th year, just re-elected for four more. So, welcome.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm Councilmember Paul Bokey. I'm on my third term. I've been on the council for 10 years and I'm in position seven.
All right.
Councilmember Farmer? Who accurately indicated she may be interrupted.
Yeah, we can always come back.
I'm Don Anderson. I've been on the council for 14 years now. I have two years remaining in my term and I've been mayor for the last nine.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. I think it's a good time right now to, you know, continue the conversation and building this relationship between then the Squali Tribe, the city of Lakewood. And one of our goals here in the Squali is to get out and, and start that relationship. You know, I, I know we've met over the years, but I, I don't feel like it's always been a, you know, really, I, I think now we have both sides ready to come to the table and, and really start to build this relationship and structure. You know, really, what does it look like to, to work together with the city of Lakewood and then the Squali Tribe? I know that, you know, I looked at our agenda tonight. We've got a great agenda. I'll just turn it over to you, Don, and I know that, you know, Hanford, David Trout, Pete, David, we'll all jump in when asked, I guess. So get rolling on it.
Well, I, I think, you know, the first item on the agenda was the question of renaming Fort Silicon Park. I think we had somewhat of a misunderstanding when this citizen requested through our process to have Fort Silicon Park renamed after a former mayor Claudia Thomas. That was not council-initiated and our committee that did the initial consideration unanimous, we rejected that. But we, we unfortunately did not inform the, the Nisqually Tribe that, that request had been made. It was probably as quickly as we should have, although we did inform you before it, it came, it came to fruition. So they, they had some opportunity for input. But I believe your council has, was asked to have this on the agenda. So if there's something you'd like to add or bring up, we're here to listen.
Yeah, no, I'll definitely turn it over to Mr. McLeod here, you know, who is our cultural specialist. I'm going to start calling him now. So you got a new title there, man.
I've always had that title. Will, you got to come up with.
I know, I know. Titles. I'm just bringing, you gotta, gotta wake it back up, man, you know?
Well, I don't know where to begin. I know there wasn't a lot of concern or, especially around, of course, the renaming. And it was, I think, some of the, some of the phone calls we got and some of the concerns from the, the community, which, you know, I know I see Mary Dodsworth on here and me and her, we've been working together for at least now two or three years on, on some of that, some of that park area up there. So then, when we talk about the, Mary, so when we talk about Fort Silicon or you talk about the historical Fort Silicon too, there was those questions around that. And I know the society that's there that asked some of us to sit on his board at one point. I ain't coming up with the name right now, but I know he runs the, some of that historical part of the, the park over there. And then, then of course you got your recreational park and, and things going on, which I've been in, in communication and, and always had an ear with Mary and, and what was going on. And if there was anything to really come into play with, you know, renaming it or doing something like that, I know she would have contacted us right away and had any kind of concern. But as far as the park and, you know, what we see there and what we, we, you know, our, our involvement, maybe more to the effect of, of supporting a lot of what's happening over there. So it's an educational area too, which, which it is. So I think we just need to maybe take on that project as, as council to council and really just get it kind of completed. Cause I know we've been kind of dancing around the, the sidelines, me and Mary, when it come to, you know, funding and what we're going to do and, you know, how we want to, you know, put these benches and how we want to display the history and, you know, just things in all that manner around there. You know, maybe having this, this council meeting right here will really spark that more so too, or, or, or just, just bring it, bring it together, you know, in that way. So that's all I have to say, Chairman, on that. There's not a lot of concern or comment around what's happening there, except for the fact that, you know, the involvement would be, you know, a lot of the guys are, were always concerned about, you know, the, the, the naming and what had happened to the chief over there. So, you know, when he was exonerated and, you know, Willie's dad was there and Cynthia IL, chairperson at the time, I mean, something, something in that manner, really just recognizing that too, you know, and replacing some of these older markers that are there, you know, and I've been talking about this and around the area of, of Nisqually where the treaty was signed, where they have Sheena, you know, some of these old trails and things like that. And when you look at what we have is we have, we have stone markers in some of these areas. So replacing those stone markers with more of a kiosk center standing that, that, that tells that, that history, you know, and I'm not going to say the correct history or the right history. I'm just going to say, let's just start telling the history of the area and of the people and, and really incorporate the artwork. And so, yeah.
No, I, I think you're right, Hanford. I mean, I think the goal for us at Nisqually is to continue, like I said, building these partnerships, but getting the right history and information out there is huge for us. But also, you know, some of the things we've been doing with the local schools in Pierce County and Thurston County, you know, it's, it's going in and, and, you know, really, our history is a lot of oral history. And, you know, of course, our, our, you know, our history books don't have, you know, the correct history at times. So I think it is important for us to, to really sit down and I, I look at this as just a way for us to, to start the relationship, but really kind of figure out what do we want this to look like? And I think the, the renaming of the park is a good idea, definitely. And, and talking about how we can work together on that. I mean, I think there's, looking at, sorry, my cat really just has not been on the camera in a while and feels like he needs to get in front of.
I had to sit up in a higher chair. I got my dog right here.
I know, right? But I think Dave, I'll let Treasurer IL, if he has anything to add to that.
Yeah, sure. I think definitely the more we can get our story there at the park, the better. It's a, you know, a big significance to us. I hate to be the one to bring this up because usually this is Hanford's thing, but we've been talking a lot about tourism also. And we're talking about getting an app going. And we were looking at points that this app would actually kick into people's phones and tell them this story. And, and I think this park would be a great place to direct people to go down there and see firsthand where, where to see this story and what, what happened in Squali down here and, and our chief Leshai and the wrongs that were done to him.
I think.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, we, we share your interest in honoring Leshai in, in some manner and having something that's educational and interpretive with real history. And perhaps now would be a good time. Our second agenda item is talking about partnership, potential for partnership projects, not just with Nisqually, but with others at Fort Silicon Park. And I believe Mary Dodsworth, who Hanford had mentioned, has a presentation to give you an overview of what we have planned there. And then we can talk about how perhaps we can integrate our, our mutual interests and, in expanding on the interpretation of the tribe's involvement in, in the history of the area. Mary?
Great. Thank you so much, Chairman Frank and the Squali Council and Mayor Anderson and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this amazing meeting and to share some information. As Hanford has mentioned, we've worked and been talking about this for several years. And so it's exciting to bring this forward and to share more information with you and learn from you and help tell the many, many stories that you have with our community. I'm going to share my screen. Share my screen, just one moment. Thank you very much. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Can you expand it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna open the slideshow up here. Sorry about that slideshow in the beginning. And I'm going to box the enter and now I will. You're not seeing my screen again, correct?
Correct.
Something on, share them. And here and there we go.
There's great.
Okay. Can you see the full screen or are you looking at, try swap the presenter screen?
Full screen. We're good.
Great. Thank you so much. So we've, as I said, we've been talking about a lot of amazing projects and it's great to see them come forward. So I'm just gonna go through real quickly. Hopefully many of you have been to Fort Silicon Park and I'm going to include my mouse here because, so over here is where you have the historic Fort Silicon that you mentioned. And then the area outlined in green is what we would call the recreational side, as Hanford mentioned. So there's sort of four different areas that we've talked about doing some projects, partnership projects with the Nisqually Tribe. And they all connect eventually. So I thought I would just go through the various locations at the park so that we could talk specifically about some of the ideas for each location. Some of these projects are in the process of occurring. Some are in the planning stages. So there's lots and lots of opportunity for us to partner and share information and talk about how we'd like things to look and feel and be able to tell those important stories while people are visiting at the park. One of the things that we found is it's such a large park. Whenever we're out there and there's someone in some official capacity, you know, I'll start telling one story and the people will gather. There's so much information that people want, but without somebody out there to stand on a corner and tell those stories, we want to find different ways to be able to do that and interactive ways to do that. So the first area that we talked about is sort of our plaza area. This is a brand new area at the park. And as you can see, it's a very central gathering area. It's located near parking and a restroom building. And we see it as the possible trailhead to the Squali Trail Loop, which is a new trail system that we want to include at the park. So we've recently built this restroom building and created this plaza. And we've been chatting with Hanford about creating some benches and some different seating areas that would maybe have special words or symbols or language from the Nisqually Tribe that would help tell some stories, maybe poetry. But they would be done in a manner that could be out amongst this plaza area to give people a place to rest and also be a conversation starter. And so there's lots of different ways that that can occur, but, but that's one of the projects that we've talked about doing. Another thing that we're doing is on the front side of this, you can see there's a swing. It's a great place to stop and rest and wait for folks. But there's an area here, we'll be building this kiosk. And on one side of the kiosk will be a trailhead that will, you know, let you know you are here and where the various trails are throughout the park. And I'll show you a highlighted map later. And on the other side of this kiosk, and, and you can see there's a city logo on this side. This would be in metal. And on the other side, we, we would like to put the Nisqually logo on the side. And then have on this particular kiosk, at this particular area, we have a wonderful story that we found that was printed in one of your newsletters from, I think, 1993 or something. And it really tells the story of, of the Nisqually name, the people of the river and the people of the grass. And so it's a wonderful story that can help educate folk. We also plan to put a land acknowledgement statement on there to, just to remind folks that the land that they're being able to visit is really there because of the wonderful stewardship that the Nisqually's and many indigenous people took care of our land for us. And so this would be, and then a lot of photos, some historic photos that represent the people, again, of the river and the people of the prairie and the grass. So that would be a kiosk that we would put up in this, in this plaza area, again, kind of looking at as a trailhead and at a point of information. And you can see we have the story that, again, I mentioned that was done by, that talks about the Nisqually people. And then whatever we want to put, pictures, carvings, other kinds of things to again, help educate the folks in that area. And the other thing to note is, is that where the, where the kiosk is, there's a whole area right here that is a wonderful area that could be used for celebrations, for gatherings, music, food, et cetera. So it's, it's a really nice place to get started. The second project that we'd like to talk about is again, telling that important story about Chief Leshai. And that would be at the, if it's area marked two, it's a new, also a new area that's been developed. And as you can see, we have this program called the Discovery Trail. And this is telling, it's a map that shows all the different areas where we again, have important stories to tell. And you can see that we have a location picked at this portion of the park to tell the Chief Leshai story. And that would be the, the Chief Leshai story, the history, we would see from the perspective of the Squali Tribe. And there's many different ways that we can do that as well. As you can see, we have this new, this is at the end of the park, a new parking lot area that has a rain garden in here that could also be a centerpiece for a piece of art or some other larger structure. And then we will put another kiosk similar to what we had at the other end, that will again have a U R here map. So people know when they get to the park, where they are and where the places are. And then on the opposite side will be another way, another side of a whole sign. And this is quite a large sign, like a three foot tall by four foot wide sign that could again, utilizing pictures and information, tell that story about Chief Leshai. And I'm one of, I know one of the council members just mentioned an app. There's lots of ways you can use QR codes. And, you know, everybody's got a phone. So you could, you know, click on the, the code that's there and you could have someone telling that story. And so it's not just something that you have to stand and read. It's something that you can actually hear and be a part of out at this site. So that would be another entrance. It was, when I met with Hanford and some other tribal members early, early in this conversation, we talked about some of the various areas where this could happen. And they, the members at the end were saying that they really liked this. It felt like it was the back door to the park and that's where family enters. And that, that, that was very meaningful to me, that it felt like that we were really developing this family relationship and wanting to tell those stories. So that would be the second project area. And again, utilizing images that you have, pictures that you have and other important documents or ways of telling the story. The third project is what we're calling the Nisqually Loop Trail. And I've marked it here because it's kind of in the middle of an oak prairie and an oak tree grow. And so this would kind of be, here's the map I was talking about. And you can see here's where that area one is, here's where the area two is. And the Nisqually Loop Trail is a, a loop, which people love loops, at about 1.7 miles. And the great places is that if those, those school groups, I know many, many of your members go out and talk to classrooms and schools, schools could then come to the park. They could, you know, we've got a place for a bus to park. They could come and gather at this area. They could learn those stories. They could come down to this spot and learn those stories. And then as they're going through, they can learn about the oak prairie and about the plants and the medicinal ways that the prairies use to help your people. And then again, you get to go around the lake and you could have stories here about how the river and the waters are so important to your livelihood. And then again, it's just a great educational circle and informational circle. And then also lots of people like loops. So you would have a lot of folks. And then along the way, again, having different trail markers or ways of identifying those important spots or telling those important stories. And again, this is one of those QR codes, which for some of us might be hard to figure out, but for, you know, all those school kids. And, you know, you just put your phone up there and flick it. And then again, you could have someone telling that story or you could show a video or there could be lots of ways of having more interactive conversations, even when you don't have those people out at the park. And then the fourth area that we talked about doing a project, and again, I'm just going to go back for a second because this is, again, this would be the fourth area. So you can see all of these are connected by this loop trail system. The number four area is the barn area. We have many barns. There's of course a rich history of farming on, on this property. And so one of the ideas is we're working with some community groups in order to talk about possibly restoring a barn and how that could be used to help tell the history of this site. And so we're looking at renovation interpretation, outdoor gathering areas. And this is the barn that we're looking at. And there's a plan, already some plans on the exterior, how it could look. But then we also have right here in front of the barn is an older barn that dropped. But what we kept was the foundation. And that, that is also a place where you could possibly build a large, an outdoor shelter or some kind of a structure that would be, you know, a barn has doors. You can't leave it open all the time. An outdoor structure would be accessible, you know, whenever the park was open for folks to gather, to have events and activities. I, this is just a sample, of course. It could be, you know, it's a long foundation. You could do plantings. You could do heritage gardens that talked about, you know, some of the food or plants that were important 5,000 years ago, 3,000 years ago, 500 years ago. And then the structure also, this is made of wood. It could be made out of certain types of material or it could have engravings or paintings or other kinds of things on it that would help tell those stories or just give people information while they're out at the park. So anyway, these are the four projects that we've talked about. Again, this plaza project and the trailheads, the kiosks are sort of in process, but all of these other projects are really ready to partner with you and learn from you and share with our community. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of those things we're working on. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or just hand the microphone back to the mayor and/or.
I think it looks, I mean, I think this looks amazing right here, just the, kind of the, the outline here that you have. Yeah, that's, that's awesome, really.
I just had a question, if I could. Just curious on like next steps of, how far out are you on constructing this? What are, what are areas that the tribe can participate in?
Um, so for, I'll just come back real quick to the, this building is here and that's in the area number one. That building is here. And so that's really as far as we've gotten. The kiosk is, the kiosk is actually in the process of being built. But there's, you know, room to tell these stories. We have this building here. This is the front. We also set it up here where there could be large framed interpretive information or artwork. So there's lots of time now to develop those sides. You know, the map's been created, but the other side of both of those kiosks, kiosks are wide open. I've had also the privilege of chatting with Netsi Bullchild and had, she reviewed the acknowledgement statement and also that story that gave us permission to use that story on there to talk about the name of the Nisqually people and how that name became. But there's, we've asked for, you know, we'd really like to get better pictures and captions. And how do you want that information, you know, laid out? And then the kiosk at the end regarding Chief Leshai, that's pretty wide open. So there's all kinds of information there. So opportunities to share information. So we're kind of just in the development processes where these are great ideas, but there's so much room for us to work together on. And I would really, that would be a privilege to be able to do that.
Great, thank you.
And I think that one thing we would really appreciate if, as we move down, you know, Mary is our contact point. She has had ongoing conversations with members of the tribe. We would like council approval of anything that we have in final. The, the last thing we'd want is to have something be inaccurate or inappropriate. So.
Like Councilman IL was referring to this travel stories GPS is similar married to what you're, you're talking about with these kiosses and signing. But what this travel store GPS does is reach out further to this crowd driving on I-5 who are, do maybe even just cruising by this, this area and then get pinged because of this, this app that's like recommended to be downloaded. But when you download them, it, it, you'd hear Hanford's voice talking about some of this stuff, maybe about, maybe just reading the treaty to, to, to the group, right? So maybe we work on, on that project also with you guys. Cause to us, it was pick 10, 10 sites that we can use that we will write a transcript about. And so you, you know, to me, follow the elder around so you can listen to the story and then write your transcript about how that elder told that story. Because you listen to these stories over and over and over, or like, like Willie was saying. But down the line here, I think in this generation or the next generation here, you know, we got all this recording devices and things and able to even, you know, put them on a podcast to talk about something like this, how this is of high importance to the tribe and to the members of the tribe, but also to the people in this region. When you talk about this, when this area was formed, it was still the territory of Oregon. So what Leshai and our people did was help form this state of Washington and put it on the map through this area of Dupont and Silicon. So now you have a group of, of individuals also, you know, the, the Silicon Tribe in, in the city, right? So in, in, in listening to maybe some of those stories also, but coming to Leshai because that's where he was, was taken to, to be in prison, right? So, so then we tell the other side of that story. And, and listening to some of the, you know, previous elders that are no longer here with us and, and how they talk so highly of Leshai and his warriors, right? And are his generals. When you think about Quimust and Wahilu. Right, and are his generals, when you think about Quim left and Wahi Lu, um, these individuals now, you know. I was just coming from Yelm because you think of Warwahilu, he called him Yelm Jim. So hence the word Yelm in the area of, of prairie of grass, so that's similar to the area down here in Fort Stilicum. Or in this region. And, and, and I believe some of that story comes from the Hudson Bay Fur Company, which is, is a place in there somewhere, but, um. It needs to be talked about, maybe in Dupont, they have the Hut, they had the Hudson Bay area, but then we come over to Stilicum into this, into this park, but it also into this region. That would incorporate the pialups also into some of this, some of the storyline or in some of this work. But, but looking at Lushai and then the Squali people. Especially this park right here, but I, 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 Mike, I think my question is too, is where does the, the historical side of Fort Stilicum stand with the work that we're doing?
I mean, the, the fort buildings?
Well, it's not so much the fort, I thought there was a little society or historical. Oh, that for, uh, uh, the historical fort Stilicum or something like that, right?
Yeah, the, the historical fort Stilicum is a, a nonprofit. That receives some, some bit support from the city through lodging tax and they are a group of volunteers. Who, uh, preserve, uh, work at the preservation of the remaining army buildings. And, uh, bringing out the, the history of the, in the European settlement, uh, of the area. And, and they've been broadened that, I think that's, uh. Why, uh, their invitations went to the Nisqually tribe, they wanted to present the, the full history of the area, not just the. Uh, post-European settlement era.
Well, this, this place and, uh, where the treaty was signed are really of high importance, especially when we start talking about Nisqually and the history of Nisqually. I think you could probably throw Dupont in there and, 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 you know, Fort Lewis or Fort Wilk, so. And those are some of the areas when we talk about telling this story. And having a, and having an app that people can, that we can refer people to, to say, okay, well, when you're in, when you're in the area. Download this app and listen to it, right? And so, um, I even encourage you guys to look at it. Uh, Willie's wife, where she's from, Wind River Reservation in Wyoming, has a storyline that they talk about on there. And it gives you, and, and from what I hear, cause we, we have the same group coming in to work with us. It was a high school project or it was a project with these kids in the school that wanted to make sure that they were telling or getting the elders to tell their side of the story. And so it's similar to where we're at with our elders and wanting, and wanting these kids to, to then say, hey, let's talk to these elders and record the story. So we can write it into a transcript and somebody can then narrate the story to the public so they can, so they can hear is, is the goal. And this falls into that area right here, what you just, Mary just circled in all that area, so. I think that's a, um, a good place to start or even collaborate on this project that we're, we're starting to do over on our end. And then we can bring in some of these, these key areas right here in, in area one, two, three and four. So, but, uh, but, um, download that, uh, it's called travelstories.gps and it's on any Android or iPhone that you can get. And, and then you can search and when you look at Washington, there's only three stories that are told and one's a winery up in Seattle. So it's pretty interesting to be able to put something like this on the map. But they got a lot.
One thing we, uh, I think it, it's not too early to ask for the tribe's, uh, cooperation support on, at least considering it. Is, uh, regards the, the remaining, uh, Fort Stilicum buildings. Which are in the north side of Fort Stilicum, uh, or Stilicum Boulevard. The issue there is those are currently owned by the Department of Social and Health Services as part of Western State Hospital. They're in the process of, uh, a massive project, uh, to redesign and rebuild that hospital. And it's our desire to have that section, uh, carved out and transferred to the city of Lakewood. Because we believe we would be better stewards, uh, of, uh, a, a historical park property than DSHS. Who, uh, m- most times just sees it as an annoyance, plus we could keep it from being a parking lot that, that it has become. So, uh, as we move forward in. A cooperative effort to, uh, build this into an interpretive center that, that was. Uh, uh, very close to the stockade where, uh, Lushai was imprisoned. Uh, and, uh, we would like to get that under city stewardship so that, uh, we, we can maintain that as part of the park.
I like that.
Uh, is Chairman Franks, do you have any other comments or questions?
Sorry, I'm cooking dinner, cooking dinner here and the, doing a little bit of everything, watching the Seahawks tied here and. No, I think, I think that's great. I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think this is just a, another way to educate folks. I know that, uh. We're working with the, uh, the state parks on, on the Nisqually State Park up, up towards the mountain on, on something similar to this, so. You know, I think this could be a good, uh, starting point to what we envisioned Hanford's, uh, vision of, uh. Of, uh, tourism, because it all ties in really, it's, it's that experience that we want to be able to, to help tell. I think, I, I think of it like, you know, my, my father's generation and that generation, you know, of the, of the elders who really went through the. Uh, blood, sweat and tears, you know, I, I think a lot about them and, and what they went through and now here we are in 2021. You know, there's many more, um, whether it's counties, cities or any real organization who's more willing to work with our tribes now. So I think for us, it's really just, uh, you know, continuing to tell that story of, um, the past, but also where we go in this, as this next generation also.
Well, that's, that's great and we look forward to, uh, having, uh, a, uh, a real productive relationship. And as we move forward on Fort Stilicum Park, as you can see, there are a lot of good ideas. Uh, as, as usual for the city of Lakewood, we're short on money. Uh, but, uh, I think that, uh, there are several opportunities for, uh, building this in the, uh, up in the near future. And, and doing a cooperative, uh, effort in, uh, in the interpretation and presentation of the history of the area.
And I think, you know, we, we all, I think, you know, after COVID happened, I think it, it was kind of. All of us know that, um, we're strapped for, uh, funding in a lot of areas. But I also believe that there's a lot of different funding sources through the state and the feds right now that we could probably utilize for some of this also. I think one of the main things here, um, it shows the, the teamwork and the unity between the tribe and Lakewood. And I think that can be an example for a lot of other, um, you know, cities, counties, areas, you know, that, that. Not just Nisqually works with, but all of our tribes throughout the state.
I, I, I would like to add on top of that with Willie because there is a lot of, uh, tourism funding that's going to be available through this administration and what they did for. You know, this, uh, infrastructure bill, but it's going to be an opportunity where, um, I've been following a little bit. And they talk about, um, destination, but they also talk about travel to these destinations. And so this is one of those to me destinations, if it's not just Nisqually in general, but come to see the treaty. And maybe this, this park, you know, and so the, the funding, uh, comes available hopefully soon where, you know, maybe we collaborate, that's why I said we collaborate on that. Um, write a couple of grants and, and get some of this funding to, to make this happen a little bit quicker, you know, if it's, if it's, uh, is ready available, I know that for sure. There was some.
Well, uh, I think we can come up with some, uh, some great ideas and, and this will work well, uh, and. Maybe that's a segue when we're talking about money. Uh, to the next item we have on the agenda, which is something it's going to take literally billions of dollars to solve.
It is, and I think that'll be David's, David, David, you gotta find us the money for that.
So it's, it's more than applying for a grant, the I-5 Mounts Road to Tumwater and the Squali River Delta issue. And, uh, Chairman Frank, I'll leave it to you, but I, I think David Trout is about to educate the Lakewood City Council.
Well, before David gets started, I'll, I'll start real quick with, um, you know, David worked with my father for many, many years and. David remembers the, uh, the napkins and the, the paper maps that my dad used to draw. And this was one of the things that he drew back in 1999 about this bridge being lifted. And I actually found the map, I do not wear, know where I put it now, but I do remember going through his papers, so I gotta find it and I want to make sure I got a picture of that to show everybody. And it has the date on there, he put the date on there and everything, I mean, so I'll, I'll turn it over to David here, but come on David, we got this, man.
I, I remember that map Willie very, very fondly. Um, and, and Mayor, this is going to be a little expensive, maybe we can do some bake sales at the Fort Stilicum Park and raise enough money to, uh. It's a start anyway, well, thank you all for having me here, I'm going to give you a very truncated version of my presentation. Cause I know it's late in the evening and there are lots of things to talk about. Um, and the mayor and, uh, your manager, John, have both heard this a number of times in great detail and. Um, I want to thank them both for being incredibly supportive of this effort. From day one, when the tribe was having this conversation back in 1999, we had a hard time finding an audience, anybody to listen to this issue. And when we came to the military community, the South Sound Military Community Partnership, they gave a presentation there. Uh, John and Don were the first ones to come up to us and say, this has to happen, we're with you and let's make this happen. And because of that and because of the partnership we formed, uh, this has got a chance. And so, I'm going to give you just a really brief PowerPoint presentation, um, tonight. There's certainly a lot more to be talked about, but I just want to sort of stimulate some conversation tonight. Um, this started for us. Um, as Willie pointed out with his dad, can you see the presentation there?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go.
Um, I'm not sure how familiar you are all with treaty rights and the bolt decision. It was a very famous federal court decision back in 1974 that reaffirmed the tribe's treaty rights. Including the right to 50% of the harvestable salmon in the Nisqually River and the right to co-manage that resource with the state of Washington. Soon after the bolt decision, uh, Willie's dad Billy wrote a plan to the community in 1977. And one of the key elements of that plan. And kind of like that map that Willie was talking about, the plan sits on my desk today, it's still as vital today as it was in 1977. But one of the key aspects was to put the river back together, restore the habitat, make it safe. And hospitable for salmon when they come home from their long journey. And we've been working on that for a long time, ever since I started back in 87, 35 years of working on salmon recovery projects. We've got some amazing stuff going on from the mountain to the sea, but the most critical part of all this is the Nisqually Delta. This is where our salmon migrate twice in their lives, once it's juveniles going out. Making that incredibly difficult transition from a freshwater animal to a saltwater animal. And then two, three, four, five and six years later, coming back as adults, coming back through the Nisqually Delta. This is a light R view, an aerial view showing elevations across the Nisqually Delta. And what you'll notice here, if you can see my mouse is, and you've all driven it many, many times, this is I-5 crossing the Nisqually Delta. And it forms basically a dam in the Nisqually Delta, we have two hydro projects on the Nisqually, one operated by the city of Tacoma. One operated by the city of Centralia and we'd like to refer to this as the third dam on the Nisqually and this one is I-5 across the Nisqually Delta. The Nisqually River is allowed to flow underneath the bridges. And there are a couple of flood relief channels here where high waters can pass, but not very effectively. And McAllister Creek has completely moved out of its natural bed into this odd configuration. That causes all kinds of water quality and salmon issues there, but the Nisqually is really the focus of the work that we've done. And so from the tribe's perspective, this is really all about salmon and salmon fishing and time on the water. And to give you a sense of the urgency here, when I started back in 1987, we were fishing 105 days a year. From July through February for all the various runs of salmon that came back in the Nisqually. Basically two or three days a week solidly during that entire time period, the scrollie tribal members, including Willie and his dad and others. Would be on the Nisqually River fishing and being in a place that really was important to them. By 2015, the number of days had reduced from 105 to eight. That just isn't enough time on the Nisqually River for Nisqually people and that is an indication of a salmon resource that is going in the wrong direction. To the point now where we have two ESA listed species in the Nisqually River that were obligated to recover, Chinook and Steelhead. And so this part of the, the river for us is really about salmon, but it's much more than that. And, and Mayor Anderson and John know that the, the, the links and the ties to this transportation corridor. Are critical not only for salmon, but for everything in South Puget Sound. And I want to go through this, uh, in just a moment, a series of slides to show you some of the issues we're talking about. Together with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, we've restored over 900 acres in the Nisqually Delta. It's the largest estuary restoration project north of San Francisco. And in doing that, we've used a lot of our staff time to monitor how the fish are utilizing the new created habitats. And we've had two PhD degrees come out of the work being done down there. This habitat here in Brown is the most critical of all the habitats in the Delta. This is where our Chinook salmon that are listed spend about a month as they go from a freshwater juvenile out to the ocean. And so they slowly transition here and adapt to this changing environment from freshwater to saltwater impugnant sound. So it's this gradual mixing zone where they spend a month adapting to it. What we've noticed through our monitoring though is a result of sea level rise as the habitat is shrinking. As Puget Sound marches upstream towards I-5. And that I-5 is effectively blocking the movement of this habitat upstream. And so this critical feature, important for the survival of our fish, important for the time spent on the river. Is decreasing every year and it's affecting our ability to recover fish and to meet our objectives. So from a salmon perspective, this is critically important. And this, this is a shot of the 96 flood, for those of you who are around, that was the last major flood event we had in the Nisqually River. This was characterized as a hundred year flood event. And in 1996, thousands of acres, tens of thousands of acres of private property, including tribal properties, were flooded for weeks. Because this floodwater could not effectively pass through the dam at the mouth of the Nisqually. You can notice that the river is basically bank full below, but it's not effectively moving floodwaters. And this was a problem and it's likely to be a problem again in the future, the recent work that we've done with the USGS. Indicates that this was once thought to be a hundred year flood event, we're now thinking it's a 22 year flood event. And so, all these atmospheric rivers that keep blowing in make me very nervous, I have a hard time sleeping at night because. This is coming sooner rather than later and it really is a problem. And what it's also creating as a problem, and if you pay attention to the dot, this is the Franks Landing Indian Community, this is the Wahi Lit Indian School. And this is what I think really got Dawn and John's attention, is you'll note that the river is starting to do this really odd thing here. And it's forming this really large bend. What's happening is I-5 is not allowing the river to naturally pass its energy downstream. And so it's all being captured and released above I-5 and it's doing some crazy things here. Whereas we look at it today and we're getting close to the end of this series of photos that we've put together. I-5 is at, or the Nisqually River is actually flowing upstream at this point. And that's not a sustainable condition for a river, the river wants to keep moving downstream. And the closest point to moving downstream is right here on this bend. And it's likely to shoot right through here and take out I-5 on the other side of the bridges between the wetland complex there at Pierce County and the Nisqually River. It's about a five foot elevation difference between these two points, um, at a high tide and it's all river sediment. So there's not a lot of coarse material keeping the river here. And so it's moving in this direction and it's likely to take out I-5 sooner rather than later. Now, because of the partnership and the support of Lakewood in the past and others, we were able to go to the legislature two sessions ago. And get about a half a million dollars, which a tribe match with its own half a million dollars. To hire the USGS to look at this exact issue, to look at the risk that this is causing to I-5. And also the impacts that it's having on our salmon recovery efforts. And what the USGS found was not only are we going to see more regular big flooding like we saw in 96. But just under the normal rate of erosion, that this is going to continue to march towards I-5. And that's somewhere between 17 and 20 years, just under the normal conditions, this will be up against I-5 and will create all kinds of problems. What they were not able to evaluate is the effect of an avulsion event, what if we get a 96 flood event? What are the chances of it taking out I-5 and it's impossible to know, but the likelihood is really high. That we could have an avulsion event that isolates the Wahi Lit Indian School, which would be tragic for the Nisqually Tribe and its community if we have an event go this direction. Or if it moves in this direction and takes out I-5 here, either way, I-5 is a significant risk of. Um, at least being taken out by a major avulsion event. But as a result of the work that we've done with the USGS, we've also determined that. I-5 in a number of places here is likely to go underwater under normal flood events and not necessarily, um, negatively. Or, or remove I-5, but just simply cover I-5, like we saw, uh, I-5 covered by the Shaheles in 1996. And so, when you think about all the connections here between salmon and treaty rights that we talked about earlier. A thing I didn't point out is that the fish in the Nisqually, especially Chinook. a thing I didn't point out is that the fish in the Nisqually, especially Chinook, are key to the survival of the southern resident killer whale, which are also in trouble. So this is a killer whale project. The economy of the South Sound region is absolutely linked to this corridor. And if we were to lose I five for a significant period of time with no alternative way of getting around it, really, we all experienced that with the train wreck at De Pont. Um, I live in Stillicum, and my office normally takes me about eighteen minutes to get to. On the day of the train wreck, it took six and a half hours. That just isn't a viable alternative. And so there really is no way to get through this corridor other than I five. The other key point, which brought in one of our uh key partners was JBLM, is that thirty percent of their workforce lives in Thurston County and cross this bridge twice a day. And if we were to have a major event while there's also a national security issue going on, the entire country is at risk here. And so that really caught their attention. The other thing that I didn't realize until having talked to them is that their um communication lines run under this bridge. And so if we were to lose I five, we'd also lose the communication lines for the base, which will also be a major significant issue. So because of all those things, the partners have all come together to work towards trying to solve this problem. And so in the last legislative session, we were able to get, thanks to the hard work of uh Representative Andrew Barkus, uh we're able to get five million dollars added into the transportation budget to start the NEPA process to look at alternatives, come up with design alternatives and do the environmental work so that in the legislative session beginning in twenty twenty-three, we'll be primed to go for the big ask for construction funds. Now, we've also decided that we want to keep this project moving. And so this year, we're going to be looking for, I believe it's a hundred and twenty million dollars to support some of the preliminary engineering work to move the preferred alternative towards construction, to acquire some necessary properties for the right-of-way, and also to um support the projects on five, ten, and five oh seven with the roundabouts and the the work being done there. So we actually might have a viable alternative in case I five goes out sooner rather than later. And so that hundred and twenty million dollar request is going into this session. It's a supplemental session. We're not super confident we're going to be successful there, but we want to start the conversation so that we go back in twenty twenty-three, um folks will know what we're talking about. Uh Mayor Anderson talked about how this might be billions of dollars. We've looked at some cost estimates just back at the envelope. And if we do nothing other than solve the salmon environmental problem and not deal with traffic issues, we're probably looking at about three billion dollars to do all of this work. But if we want to add lanes, which I think we probably should add lanes while we're at it, to um deal with traffic issues that are moving in this direction, if we want to potentially create an opportunity for sound transit to come into Thurston County, we're probably in the neighborhood of four to five billion dollars. We'll know a lot more by this time next year, once our NEPA work is done. But we are talking about billions of dollars. But when you think about the connection of all these different factors, uh we've got such a unique partnership, including you all working with us on this, that it's just a matter of time before this happens. And I remember when Billy drew that on his uh Hawks Prairie placemat back in nineteen ninety-nine, we kind of laughed and thought this is a really important thing, but this is going to be hard to do, and we'll see if it actually happens. But now it's got enough momentum because enough folks are supporting it that it's actually going to happen. We are much closer now to having this reality than we were five years ago, in large part because of you all being with us. And so with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'd certainly be uh open to ask, answering questions if there are any, or we can.
I think, I think David, real quick, you know, the map that he drew, I feel like he was going kind of for the grand slam of it, and I remember it was up a little bit higher, but we'll take whatever we can get to preserve the river there. So.
Yeah, it was a great conversation with your dad. And what he wanted was two things. He wanted the Lions Gate Bridge in British Columbia over the Nisqually from Hawks Prairie to JBLM with no exit at the bottom, so people would simply drive by and enjoy the Nisqually. And he wanted a toll booth so that when people went over the bridge, they can contribute to the protection of the Nisqually. And so we're going to include that in the NEPA work, but the cost estimate for that is about thirty billion dollars. And if that's all, three billion dollars is a lot of money. Thirty billion dollars is a crazy amount of money. So um but it was, it was a great uh vision of your dad's, Willie. Thanks. Um, and and what's kept me going on this project is really a conversation that Willie and I had um a couple of years ago, when he talked about how important it was for him to be on the river, because when he's on the river, he's talking to his dad and to his granddad because he's fishing in the same spot they always fished. And the fact that he only got to do that eight days in two thousand and fifteen is tragic. And so this, this project has to go forward so we can get back to more normal times on the Nisqually River and protect the South Sound economy too. So, thank you.
And I think, real quick, Dave, um, you know, yeah, that, that is the, the significance for Nisqually and and Hanford and I and Treasure IL and you know, everybody who's a part of our team and and whether they're native or non-native, you know, um, one of our goals is to to really, um, you know, just, just get the outside community to understand the importance of salmon for us and and having that that right. As you heard earlier, David, I mean, we used to fish eight, nine months out of the year, and and we're lucky to get six to nine days. We fight for six to nine days now on the water, you know, and and, you know, really for, for me, I mean, I, I, I have a, I feel like, you know, my, my outlook and vision of where we as human beings will be in the next twenty years, it's going to take all of us to come together on this. You know, and and really for the sustainability and the survival of our Nisqually people, this project is a must for us. You guys all know that. We've been working together. You know, for me being on that water on Sunday, you know, being able to set that net in the same spot that my father and grandfather fished in and my brother, um, you know, who, who's all I got left now as far as my intermediate family in Hanford now, you know, also, but it, it's, it's those stories and and that experience that, you know, we, I can never forget in my lifetime. And, you know, anybody who really has had that experience of being on the water, whether you're fishing or just going for a boat ride, you guys know how beautiful it is down there. And uh, you know, our goal is just to make sure that uh, you know, we, we sustain what we have, but also we all know in two thousand and seventeen with the train derailment, how bad that was for um Thurston County and Pierce County and the commuting and the the uh transportation issues.
I uh wonder if there are any questions from uh Lakewood Council for uh for David. Great presentation, David.
Hey, Mayor.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh David, thank you for the presentation. I pulled it up on my Google Maps and I've got it satellite. So the, obviously, the preferred alternative is the thirty billion dollar high bridge kind of thing, but realistically, what, what, what are you thinking? More kind of like an act, aqua duck or or a bioduck kind of?
Yeah, I, I think so. Yeah, we want to elevate it off the floodplain as much as possible. Um, there's going to be some give and take to protect some private properties and business interests that are down in the lower valley. We need to work with them and figure out what we can do there. But at least allowing the floodwaters to move in both directions on the Nisqually and then get back to the McAllister side and put it back in its natural channel. If you look at that, the photo you've got and look at the McAllister side, it does two ninety-degree bends that are in completely artificial, and it has slowed the water exchange in McAllister Creek. So instead of it flushing every day, it takes forty-five hours for water to flush completely out of McAllister, which in the summers creating fecal coliform issues for the shellfish farms located down at the mouth of the river. And so we want to fix both ends of that and then ultimately create a channel on the tribe's property. We own property downstream from the refuge on the Pierce County side of the refuge, create a distributary channel to deal with flood issues um effectively. And then the long-term vision is to move the refuge facilities upstream into the McAllister Valley and to open up the entire Nisqually Delta for fish habitat. And we're working closely with them on that, and they're very supportive of that long-term vision as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you bet. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Well, it's, uh, you know, it's a strange uh, a strange day perhaps when uh long-haul truck drivers, tribal fishermen, and the army all agree that something should happen. So we should take advantage of that.
That, that is a good day.
I like that, Don. I've never heard that before. I like that. That's a good one.
Jason, did you have a question? I saw that I saw your hand up.
David, thank you for the presentation. It really helps educate all of us on the needs down there. Do we know if there are any dollars set aside in the federal transportation uh package that might flow uh toward this project at this time?
Well, that's a great question, and we've been working closely with Senator Cantwell to see if we can direct some of those funds our way. The rules haven't come out yet and how those funds are going to be dispersed within the state of Washington. So we're involved in those discussions. We're hopeful that we can move some this way. Um, those funds may be a step or two ahead of us. We won't be ready for construction until twenty twenty-three. And if there's patience in using those funds, then we'll get in line, but it's likely that uh we'll be looking for other resources when the time comes.
Well, and I think for us, really, um, we're trying to just kind of kind of pave the way right now. We've had Congresswoman Strickland, Congressman Kilmer. Um, you know, we're, we're taking them down and we're starting to show this project and and get the conversation going because we know it can't be just a state issue or a state, you know, funding. This has to be a federal, you know, military. We all need to come together for this. And and I think, I think it's definitely doable. They're all very um open to hearing, you know, kind of, you know, what we see as it and, you know, working with you guys as well as JBLM and everybody else is really just kind of like uh, like Mayor Anderson said, I mean, now's the time to do it. If we, if we're going to do it, I feel like we have a good chance right now to really just make some uh real positive uh momentum on this project.
And and to follow up on Willie's point, the best way to see this is in Willie's boat on the Nisqually River. So if anybody's interested in a tour, and maybe when the weather's a little bit nicer.
One hundred percent. I went down to the river today and it was moving way too fast to even think about backing my boat in there. So in the springtime, uh, you know, Mayor, anybody else who would like to go and see this, you know, on the, on the river at, at um the right time of the year, I'm all for going down there. Uh, David, you know, he promised me he's going to buy a new uh boat for the uh council to take these tours on, so.
It's, it's on order.
So. Any other questions from council? Have a, have a hard time operating the uh hands-up function out of my phone, so uh speak up. Well, thanks again, David. That's uh as you indicated, a truncated version, because I know you could speak for this on a couple of hours and not repeat yourself. So uh, thanks for uh providing so much information in such a limited time.
Thank you, Mayor.
So the, the final item we had on the agenda is uh just looking forward with cooperative agreements. We've talked about the park. We've talked about uh transportation issues, but wow, I'd like to kind of kick this back to Chairman Franks. We we have, you know, a business relationship with respect to Nisqually. Mark, I know you're interested in expanding business interests. Uh, we have business relationship with as being a customer or jail. Uh, and so uh, you know, we, we've developed, I think, a degree of of trust in those relationships and would like to see that continue. Do you have any particular ideas or initiatives you'd like to share with us?
You know, a- as of now, I mean, I, I mean, just seeing your guys' is presentation on the parks, I mean, that, that gives me hope right there and and confidence that, you know, we're going to be able to uh come to the table and and continue building this relationship. And um I think having Pete on board is our CEO who used to work with Pierce County quite a bit. You know, I think uh sitting down with him also, as well as as you folks and figuring out, you know, I mean, we, we have, like you said, we have MOUs in place. We got different agreements in place, but I think now really, I feel like at the tribe, we're ready to take it kind of to the next level, but I don't know what that is yet. I feel like the work that Hanford has been doing and and this council, as well as Netsey working with you guys, I mean, I think for us, it'll be, you know, us having to sit down with each other and kind of talk amongst ourselves and see what this looks like because like I said, I mean, I, you know, I've been on council eleven years and um you know, we've met with you guys here and there, but it's never been, you know, I feel like this is actually a sincere relationship and and a partnership that's going to grow and and continue to grow. You know, I, I feel like where we are in the Squali within the next five to ten years, um, I'm confident that that, you know, we'll be uh we'll have a, a, a much better view of what this area is going to look like, but I also believe that, you know, the city of Lakewood is a huge, huge partner and and um, you know, somebody that we're going to work with over that time as well.
Well, you know, it's, it's a bit unusual that normally, when you're in a government-to-government relationship, you, you have a, a, a right-line boundary. You've got your side and and our side. And in this case, we're within your boundary uh from a historical perspective. And so uh it, it's, it's different, but it, it can be good. So.
And and plus, I think it's different because we have such a young council right now also. Um, you know, I think this is the youngest council we may have ever have had at Nisqually in one time. Um, you know, I used to be the youngest one, but now somebody's got me by ten years, eleven years. So now I'm, I'm starting to feel like I'm, I'm getting to be that older guy. So like I said, I mean, just, just seeing the, the, you know, relationship and really the past year, really, just seeing that grow, you know, and Hanford and I talk about this all the time, David, you know, we talk about what is a what does, you know, a, a real partnership look like, not with just Lakewood, but but other cities, whether it's Eatonville, Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, um, DuPont, you know, I, I feel like there, there's so much out there for all of us to to be a part of. And and I, I truly believe a hundred percent that we are going to all have to work together to to move forward here in the state. Um, yeah, there's, there's going to be a lot of issues ahead, but I think we can do it together.
Uh, so before we close here, uh, I think uh first Chairman Franks, I'd like to uh give you the opportunities if uh anyone from your side has any final words to add, uh, and then I'll give uh my counsel a chance uh to make final comments if they'd like.
Yeah, definitely. I know Treasure IL had to jump off. He's uh going back to school and working on his master, so he had class at seven tonight, but um, Hanford, I don't know if you wanted to add anything before we uh close out here? And I see Mike had a hand up on your, your, your team over there.
No, I don't. I think uh I said quite a bit and yeah, I'm just ready to get to work. How about that there, Chairman? He's got me working twenty-four hours a day, as you can see, so, no. But I appreciate the time and everybody coming together. And, you know, this is, this is part of that. When he says relationship and we talk about, you know, these working groups and, you know, I've always used the analogy of I weave these baskets and it takes a lot of not only a time and patience, but it takes that, that, that strand when you put it together and you interlock them. And when you bring it together, it makes a stronger basket. So, so that's kind of how I look at these relationships and how we want to, want to bring this together and, you know, make a basket that's going to hold all the good things as we move forward. You know, there's, there's always that stuff that's from from behind us or that we, you know, talk about in our past, but, you know, if we don't, I think on our end, talk about it more so to get through that healing, that um it sounds a lot better when, when, when my kids behind me are going to talk about it, you know, not have so much not bent up animosity or anything like that. It's just, it's just how these stories are told orally and passed out. You know, and so that healing starts and it's got to start somewhere, right? And so that's kind of where we're at and and um, you know, having everybody in, in the same room, even on the same Zoom, you know, talking about the same goals and the same visions is is pretty awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brad Stetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman Franks, uh, members of the council, I really appreciated the fact that we've had this chance to interact in this joint meeting today. Uh, I come away with the impression that we have a lot of commonality in our vision uh for uh for the area in terms of being able to look that want to have a future that's both respects and is informed by the history that goes back for a long time. Uh, as well as a, an understanding of that when we look to the future, that the future is not just next year, but the future is actually next generation uh and how we look to go to do that. Uh, so I think that there are ways that we as two bodies can work together, but I think that there are also ways that we as two communities can work together. I can tell you from listening to folks that are in Lakewood, um, there is genuine interest. there is genuine interest in learning about the the Nisqually and the heritage of not just the tribe, but of the area that that where we are and of preserving things. And I think that we can have that goal well. I think there's one other area that we might move forward with some cooperation. Pre pandemic, both of us had active programs with youth council where we were looking to build leadership and some resiliency and looking to prepare young folks to be able to be leaders in the future. I think that as we, both of our programs have probably were cut back and slowed or ceased during the latter part of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. But that as each of our youth council programs move forward with looking at conferences and activities in the as we transitioning out of the pandemic in twenty twenty two, that our two groups may find if we can get them talking to each other, may well find a good way to work together as that next generation beyond us or in my case, several generations. To to be able to go and do that. And I think that that's an area that we that we should explore, both for the benefit of our young people and for our own benefits because of their perspective being informative to what we need to do.
Real quick with Jason, that's great. I love to hear that because one of the things pre pandemic, we we were trying to do the same thing with the city of Lacey. And we wanted to really build our youth council and theirs and start to strengthen it. But I'm glad you said that because we are, we are kind of doing a a whole new reorg on our youth program. So I think this will all tie in. You know, hopefully by the springtime, we can all be ready to at least get our youth together anyway to start the conversation. And plus, when we spend time on the river, I we will definitely give you guys a lot of good educational history there when we're at the mouth of the river, you know, it'll be a great trip, David, you know, we've we've been doing this now for the last two years and I I really enjoy taking everybody down. And just having the chance to see the river with them. So.
Chairman Franks, one of the things that our youth council's planning is to have a an in person youth summit coming up in a few months. And they had a very successful one, bringing in speakers and engaging each other on various subjects in the past. And so that may be an opportunity if the timing is right to invite the Nisqually youth up.
Yes, I definitely agree.
Mr. Mr. Wayland.
I don't know if this is our time to give kind of sort of closing thoughts or comments. I'll take the opportunity. I just want to again reiterate and say thank you. It's really great to continue our partnership together. If if anything, Lakewood is a community that's been built on partnerships and I think we do a decent job of cultivating those partnerships and I look forward to working with all of you, as all of us do, to continue to strengthen our bonds over the course of hopefully many years. And, you know, as advocates ourselves, we're all all of us, tribal council members, Lakewood City Council members, we're advocates in a sense for our respective communities. And having good education really is the foundation for even you know, Don and I were lawyers together, practiced law for twenty one years together, and now we've been on the council together for twelve years. So we know well the value of great education to the advocacy process. So thanks for that. I'm excited about the opportunity to bring history and culture alive for our community at Fort Silicon Park. So Mary's work with Hanford would be just fabulous as we continue to to work together to create a really vibrant sense of culture for our community to realize the the beauty and the history of the Nisqually culture here in this area. But I look forward to it. And frankly, with regard to food and the opportunity to be with you, there's nothing better than having a meal together. And I look forward to that time when we can actually sit down across from one another and really share a fantastic meal and create relationships. So thank you. I look forward to that and the boat trip.
I'm pretty sure Hanford could cook some fish on a stick for you guys.
I would love it. I would love it. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
Well, thanks again for for joining us and and cultivating cultivating our growing partnership. I I expect this to be a project for generations. Looking not just for next year or a a project that we can finish at the park in two years or ten years for the a a new viaduct over the Nisqually Delta, but something that's permanent and productive. And it's it's a good place to start. It's good to hear that the Nisqually leadership is youthful and energetic. I was there once too. Ironically, it's fifty years ago this month that I was elected to Piala City Council as or to Piala School Board as an eighteen year old. It took a big break in there, but it it is something that I I see with this tenure that that you, Chairman Franks, and and Hanford have on the council and your relative youth that are going to be leaders for a long period of time and and can educate the next generation of Lakewood City Council members as to the the hi- history and importance of the Nisqually people in this region. So we want to to set the foundation for that relationship and and build on it for the future. So thanks again for taking the opportunity to meet with us tonight. And we hope it's it's one of many more to come.
Real quick, before we log off, David Trout, you know, he he tells this story great about Indian country, about how, you know, he used to cut my pancakes at breakfast when I'd go to meetings as a young kid with my dad. So it's funny how full circle, but that's Indian country, though. You know, Hanford has the same thing with his grandparents, with his mom and dad. You know, it is. It's that that generation and and you guys know, just as well as you, Mayor, and everybody else on the call, you guys aren't going anywhere. Neither are we. Just then the Squali tribe and the city of Lakewood, they're they're not going anywhere, you know, and and over the years, we'll continue to see we'll all come and go and and it's really just what are we doing now for that next generation and and, you know, setting up that foundation now. I I don't want that next generation to go through the struggles that many of us have over our life in in building and strengthening this relationship. So you 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 got our support, Mayor.
Well, you've you've got our support too. And it was, we're we're right next door and we hope that we continue what is in some ways, I think, a rather unique circumstance. We've now had a a couple of joint meetings. And I don't know of any other city council around that's met with any other tribe in a similar manner.
You guys, you guys are setting the example and you guys are setting the bar. So I think that's that's very great. And we're very thankful and grateful that you guys are are so eager to come to the table with us also. So.
Well, if you don't have anything further, I think we've probably reached a good portion, point to to break and maybe see who wins a football game.
All right. Well, you guys, I'll have a good evening.
Okay, and then thank you very much. We're adjourned.